So let's go ahead and call to order this February fourteenth, Regular Board of Education. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have first Sarah Balla, the student, Somers High School Student Council President. Hello, Sarah.
Hi, good evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Thanks, Sarah.
Just gonna move this closer. We have quite a bit to report, so we could just jump into it. So, starting with student life, there are a few events that have happened since we last met. We had our Coffee House, which was a really big success. We had a lot of student performers there. NHS had two events. They had their blood drive on the ninth, and they had made service hours opportunities for candidates and those reapplying. So they were able to, students were able to make Valentine's Day cards for senior citizens. And we had the Hang Up and Drive Driver Safety Program, which was hosted on the eighth for all sophomores and juniors who missed it last year, which is a mandatory thing in order to be able to park in your senior year. We have tickets available for the Somers High School Spring Musical Production. They're on sale now, and the show will be from March twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth. Our academic challenge team has qualified for their national competition, which is in June in Chicago, and they are now working on fundraising, including a competition which staff member, which they vote on which staff member has the cutest pet. Let's see, we wrapped up the Somers Central School District Telling My Stories Contest, and that was due yesterday, and that's going to be judged by you guys, I'm assuming? District Admin and the SEAT Committee. Let's see, the Katona Museum of Art had their fortieth annual Young Artists Exhibition, and Somers High School had their own art students' work presented as part of the exhibition, which is really cool. And given that February is Black History Month, today we honored that with a music celebration during lunch, where we played music from black artists from the fifties to modern day. This is just an announcement from the Environmental Club that they are currently selling merchandise, first time ever, which includes sweatshirts and t-shirts, and all the merch was designed by Jessica Lee. And that payment, deadline to order is the sixteenth, deadline for payment is the seventeenth, and you can do that through their Instagram. Moving on to athletics. So we will have a clapout for our winter season state and national qualifiers on Wednesday, February fifteenth at 2:00 p.m. And the state and national qualifiers are, for girls' winter track, we have Haley Donovan, Isabella Miloevic, Lindsay Gill, and Kira Cleary. For boys' winter track, we have Charlie Armstrong, Matt Hirsch, Andrew Faison, Jaden Abreu, and Jared Google. For wrestling, we have Ryan Ball. For gymnastics, we have Georgia Nikos. And for Diamond Swim, we have Jay Wilkinson. And just a shout out to Matt Fitzsimmons, who scored his one-thousandth point playing basketball on varsity basketball senior night. Moving on to counseling. We had our eighth grade visit last Friday, which was a great success. We were hosting the club fair, got to meet a bunch of students. It was pretty great. And today, we had presentations to the sophomores on the Bocees Tech Program and IB. And sophomores were invited to go on the Bocees Tech Tour, which was led by Mr. Fleck in the College and Career Center, in which the thirty-two who attended were able to see firsthand the programs and facilities that were available to them. And junior conferences are happening these past two, or have been happening these past two months, as students begin to pick their classes for next year, as well as discussing their postgraduate plans. And then finally, Student Council. For the exec board, we're in the process of submitting our National Council, our Gold Council of Excellence application for the 2022-2023 school year. Our NYCLSA trip is less than a month away. It's going to be from the twelfth to the fourteenth up in Niagara Falls, and we have our plans for Battle the Bands, which are currently underway, and the date for that's going to be April twenty-first. And for Class Board, we have our ice skating trip Thursday up in Bear Mountain, and we have the Six Flag Trip, currently in process of being planned for, which I'm assuming, I think, is June second. And then the sophomore class just wrapped up their Valentine's Day carnation sale and delivered the flowers today, which is a very nice surprise. And that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you, Sarah. Hey, great luck, best of luck at the Student Council Conference. So I believe, Board, we have our first of two public comment sessions. Speakers who are here from the community that would like to give a public comment specific to any of the items on our agenda this evening, which, just as a reminder, includes our Forward and Excellence Report, as well as our budget, and then some reports from the committees and liaisons. So any members of the community, please remember that you should write your name down so that we can get ahold of you afterwards and make sure to direct your comments to the appropriate individuals. Sure, please. Just a quick reminder that we don't refer to folks by names. Staff members will reply to any questions at a later date. Go ahead, right at the podium. Nancy, do we have a?
There's nothing to write my.
Is there a place to write down names?
Yeah, there's a pen there.
May have been moved.
I'll put it on a paper later.
Oh, thank you.
Hi, I'm Seoma Gonzalez. I'm a Somers resident. I have two kids in the school district, one at Primrose and one at SIS. Thank you so much for always starting with the student voice. I really do appreciate it. I do have a couple of questions about the presentations this evening. A couple of them are just specific to the Forward and Excellence Report. I just want to lift them now. I know they may not come up, but I think this is the appropriate time for me to ask them. And then just a couple about some items in the budget. In terms of the demographics of the district on Slide seven, I would appreciate if perhaps an additional breakdown for economically disadvantaged special education and ENL populations might be lifted at some point. In terms of Slides nine through twelve, a further breakdown of the levels that are shared. So currently, it's about meeting benchmark with the STAR assessments and with the state assessments. And I'd be curious to know how many kids are exceeding benchmarks, and then also where they fall within the bands. It's such a large band, large band for being in either levels three or four. In addition, I'm hoping that the observable decline in students meeting proficiency levels in both ENL and math, as they progress from Primrose to SIS to SMS, is addressed, and what the reasons are for this decline from the progression from one to the, one school to the next on the STAR assessments, and what is particularly being done about it, particularly as we are trying to expand enrollment in IB, dual enrollment in AP coursework at the high school. And then I'm also curious just about the MTSS, the multiple, I never get this acronym right, the Multi-Tierred Systems of Support, and how those Tier Two and Tier Three supports are moving students into the sphere of success, and which kind of programs have been impactful. And I am also curious why so many families are refusing to test students. I'm just curious about what the concerns are and the implications of the high refusal rate. In terms of the graduation rate, I would also like to see a further breakdown of which students are going to four-year colleges versus the workforce versus two-year colleges in terms of the demographics, whether there are trends with race, ethnicity, IEP status, economically disadvantaged, et cetera. In terms of the AP and IB enrollment, in addition, like, who are the kids not taking AP courses? How may we target them better? What are the reasons? Those are all of my questions about the Forward and Excellence Report. In terms of the budget report on Slide seven, although I know that we will always be purchasing curricular resources, I do have some particular concerns regarding Fontis and Pennell. Recent ed reports ratings have stated that they does not meet standard. In addition, as an SIS parent, I have not had access to a lot of family resources to provide insight as to how I can build a school-to-home support system. However, it does appear that everyday mathematics is appearing to now approach standards. And I think, oh, in terms of academic intervention support, it does seem like the district is going to continue to fund, I don't know if it's an expansion or not, of AIS and Advanced Learning Support. But again, I would like to know what is the impact of these services and how are kids moving out of these programs once they get the support? In addition, how are kids who are in the advanced learning programs accelerating and improving? And then the last is just about the Spanish Language Program. I know there's a mention of the Point Four Position being reallocated. I'm just curious about the future plans for expansion and the integration of bilingual instruction, and how the program is working this year, and what it will look like next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for those questions. Can, there was a lot there.
I will submit it if you want.
Can, yeah, don't mind. Can we grab that?
You have to forgive my grammatical errors.
Thank you for the questions specific to the agenda.
You're welcome.
Hopefully, they'll be addressed as we go through the items. I know that you've prepared many of those responses in advance. Thank you.
You can give those to Nancy. She'll take them as the board clerk. She'll read them into record and stuff like that.
She'll put them. We'll have them.
Thanks, Nancy.
Okay, so if we don't have any other public comment about agenda items, I believe it is Central Office Report and Forward and Excellence, Dr. Blen.
So we'll go ahead and start, and then Claire will go ahead and join the table here from the Learning Office.
Excellent.
So we'll make sure we get that. Oh, great. Get that set up there. So thank you, Claire. So as Claire Comer-Furtz, our representative from the Learning Office tonight will come forward. So you'll notice this evening that we've updated kind of our layout of our report here somewhat. And as Eamore said here before, that she has some questions, and certainly Odyssey, you can certainly reach out to Claire. I know you guys have talked on many things before. So there'll be some questions that'll be addressed this evening, and other ones to follow up on, so I'll go ahead and start there. And then so the, after our initial table contents, maybe Claire, if you can drop in on that one. So again, this intent here is, as we move forward, that tonight we'll be looking at basically just one chapter in this report. And so we'll be looking at the Twenty-First Century Knowledge and Skills. And as the board goes throughout the year, as we know, for example, in September, that's when we typically bring the Professional Learning Report, so that'll be added into here. So the end result is intended to have a kind of one-stop shopping, where all those different elements of excellence that'll be walking through will be in one document on the district website. So I'll go ahead and head into, just we'll pass by the message here, community, and that's welcoming folks to the community and things. Again, so as they would pick up this document, being either district current members or future family members that are looking to Somers, they'll get a little bit about the district there. The next slide is identified as about the report, and you will see here, this is, as we mentioned at our last meeting, an update to the district's mission, vision, and collective commitments. And so these areas of Twenty-First Century Knowledge and Skills, social, emotional, and physical wellness, as well as global citizenship, have been in place for over a decade in the district and continuing driving our work forward. The area of family and community engagement, as well as the fiscal stewardship, have been there. They've been identified as a pull forth and bring that out and codify that in writing and doing some tracking along with that. So, for example, fiscal stewardship, we anticipate at our, in one of our subsequent meetings with Chris, we'll be looking at that in our budget piece in this kind of new framework. So you'll see, hopefully, the same scheme and the colors and the look here, and we'll start looking at initial fiscal stewardship there. And then as we go onto the next piece here, just want to show you about the district. This is where, again, the information is identified and gathered from the State of New York website. So there's certainly more detail that can be provided here, but we have these numbers as far as students that are derived in here. Again, that's alignment with the New York State website. So it does not reflect the twenty-two, twenty-three, what we believe is the number. We were using the number, so if folks looked on the state website, it would align with that directly. And then our employees there as well, the number of employees, that's all employees from teaching staff, support staff, to administrative staff, to all positions. And as we heard here before, some information on the demographics. So the demographic information here, again, is information that's derived from the state website, so you'll be able to see that, as well as the state does break down some other information in there as well, too. And so when you look in here, you can see certainly some of the changes in proportions of families, where back in fifteen, sixteen, approximately ninety percent of students were white, and ten percent were non-white, and then where we're getting right now, a little bit below eighty percent were white, and a little bit above twenty percent were not white. We anticipate, based upon the enrollment of our Primrose campus, that we will go ahead and see that number probably be roughly a seventy, thirty difference. So we'll see about seventy percent white, thirty percent non-white. This, again, is an example of where we could break out some of the demographic questions that were asked before exponentially. We can have that information, just trying to think about how do we keep this report consumable. So all that information available, we can get out of Learning Office, and so we can certainly get that to you. It's just trying to have it be consumable and not too much. But again, as my commentary was there made, we see the Primrose, a little bit different ratio than the higher level at the high school. That will work its way, we anticipate, through the school system, K through twelve, or PK twelve now for a bunch of our kids, that we will go ahead and see that roughly in about seventy, thirty is where our current projections put that.
Ray, is it safe to assume that all of this data is on the state ed website? So if folks did want to drill down into those sort of smaller data points?
Yeah, in particular, demographics are helpful out there. Yep.
Thank you.
And then the state testing information as well, too. Just a note here about our overall building enrollment as well. Again, that you can see, we've got a range in there around one hundred and seventy-five to two hundred students, depending upon the grade level that we anticipate moving forward. And so we anticipate, for example, the high school in the coming years will level out at approximately eight hundred students, where a few years ago, there were about eleven hundred. This year, they're just under a thousand. Next year, they'll be right around nine hundred and about forty or fifty kids in the coming years to ultimately getting at about eight hundred. That's the smaller classes coming up. And so we'll look a little bit later, actually, here in Chris's report. That actually does break that data set out by each school and does show you the attendance or the student enrollment by each school. So we'll have that. The next area, and then I'll go ahead and start turning this over to Claire. We'll kind of bounce back and forth again here, is that, so you'll go through each campus, Primrose, SIS, middle school, and high school. We'll be looking at our internal assessment benchmarks, as well as some of the state identified benchmarks, in particular in the third through eighth grade levels. And then you will go ahead and look at the high school. Information is there, where, too. And Claire will speak to some of the things we heard before about the MTSS, or Multi-Tiered System of Support, and the evidence there that we'll see from the identification where students are in that pyramid you'll see, walking over the right. So hopefully, through the conversation, you'll see a lot of that individual movement that's cutting across there. So Claire, I'll go ahead and turn that piece over to you, and we'll bounce it back and forth, if that's all right. So did I get to the right slide? Yeah, I did. Pretty good. Thanks, good.
Thank you. So as we've talked about a little bit now, the Multi-Tiered System of Supports here in Somers design is designed to identify students and their needs early and intervene early as well. So what we'll see in this report is, on the left-hand side, the pyramids represent the percentage of students in Primrose and ELA and math, ELA on the top and math on the bottom, who are identified early in the beginning of last year as needing academic support at differing levels. And then what we see in the right-hand column is the end-of-year performance of Primrose students, K through two, on our internal benchmark assessments. The top being either STAR early literacy or reading later on, and the bottom being math, math, STAR math. And what we, what we have used so far is STAR, and what our whole team is doing from kindergarten through eighth grade is trying to integrate more multiple measures of assessments to drill down deeper and more specifically into skills, skill strengths, and also skill needs for all of our students. And so we've integrated, DIBELS has always been integrated into Primrose, dynamic, hold on, I gotta think of this one.
Indicators of basic early literacy skills.
Dynamic indicators of basic early literacy skills. And we're integrating that up into SIS and the middle school also, so that, so that we have a very strong idea of the skills that students are performing well on and still need some growth in. We've also integrated iXL for ELA in all of, in our elementary buildings, SIS, and also in the middle school. That gives teachers and students more specific skill development, needs, and progress as they move throughout the year. As well, the entire elementary team has focused this year on, on focusing on the science of reading, more explicit literacy instruction at the elementary grade level, and we've invested in professional learning on the science of reading for our elementary teachers. And as we'll see later, when we look at our mid-year reports from this year, we see that, you know, the progress that those teams have been making. And if we, so if we see, you know, if we look at these pyramids, we see, you know, we see that the supports that we are providing are helping our students meet proficiency. There's always areas to grow, and those continued supports, the, the, the moving in and out or up and down the tiers of the Multi-Tiered System of Support is fluid. So as students demonstrate need, they are provided supports. And as they continue to reach success, those might be, they might be kept the same, because that might be what students need to maintain proficiency and success, and they might, they might be decreased if that's what the data is showing.
Quick.
So, oh, please.
Quick question. Just so I understand, the, so the tiers of support are showing the initial sampling and where everyone was, and then the performance level is showing the end result. And it's safe to say that the tier one matches up with the benchmark, you know, at or above? Right, okay. So that's the, the green matches the blue, yellow to gray, and red to?
No.
No, yellow. Yellow to red?
So.
Approaching benchmark, sorry. Yep.
So.
And then gray is red.
It's not a direct relationship in terms of, is everyone in tier one reaching benchmark? You might have students in tier three who are, who are needing other supports, who may not, you know, who, the test may not be showing that exact data, so. Can I? Is it safe to say, oh, sorry?
No, no. So when it, it's a great question. When I first looked at this data, I had the same question, and I emailed and said, help me understand what's happening here. Because it looks like if we're looking just at the reading, that there's eighty-two percent of our kids who are scoring at or above the forty-first percentile. Is that right, Claire? But it didn't exactly, it wasn't a one-to-one correlation between that and tier one, which is just traditional classroom instruction. So then the question is, where, where is that eighty-two percent coming from, right? Like, is that what you're asking? So where is that coming from? And one of the things that, that I heard back, if I, let me know if I got this right, is that just because students are receiving that extra tier of support, the tier one to tier two or tier three, they might be at or above meeting or excelling expectations, but they require still those supports.
Yeah.
Right? So, so these, they both add up to a hundred percent, but it doesn't, it's not like a one-to-one correlation between what scores they're getting. Did I get that right?
Yes.
And because they're fluid, because they're fluid, it could depend on what is being taught at the time. Like, there could be a particular part of reading that they might need extra help with, but not another part of reading.
So if you have a student who has an IEP or a five oh four that requires different grouping for different support, that child still might be, you know, getting a ninety-five, but they would still have those extra, access those extra levels of support. Is that right? Those extra tiers?
Right, because some students need the support to, to reach those levels.
But you don't take those supports away just because they're reaching those levels. You keep them in place so that the students can continue being successful. It's not, let's have them there until we can remove them.
Absolutely.
It's let's keep them in place, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I have a question, actually, one layer above, that is, out of five hundred thirty-seven employees, how many people are in Primrose? In the sense of percentage or numbers, if you have it?
I'll have to get back to that one, if, if you send me the note. I don't know exactly if five thirty-seven of your Primrose.
I think the line of question, I think, we're thinking, is certainly we want to have the resources applied in the right place, right, you know, school and so on. So I think the basic number out of hundred, five hundred thirty-seven, the administrator and the faculty and so on, should be divided among four schools associated with these pie charts and the tiers, so that we could understand how we really sort of, you know, allocate the resources.
You mean who's enacting those tier three supports?
Yeah, exactly.
So just as a.
It goes into that, yeah.
Just as a side note, one of the things that you'll see in a forthcoming piece is the Professional Learning Report. That is where the plan is to put in the breakdown of the staffing in that area. If the board would rather have it in this year, we can change that. But the intent there is, here's the faculty and the staff, those different roles. Here's the professional learning they're experiencing. So that was the intent, to put in that element of excellence, but we can certainly coordinate that someplace else, so. Thanks, Claire.
Nick had a question.
So, yeah, no, so back to my question. So the performance levels, do you have where that moved from? So I know we hit a lull, lull of COVID, but, you know, all the supports, things like that. Do you have how that's kind of transitioning, you know, with all the programs you're putting in place and things like that? So the eighty-two percent, you know, meeting benchmark. Sorry, yeah, meeting benchmark at or above. Where was that, you know, two years ago? And how is, like, how has that moved?
Yeah, I mean, we keep an eye on historical data. I don't have on the top of my head where we were two years ago, but we can certainly go back to this report two years ago and take a look at those numbers if the public wants to, or we can provide those to you as well. But keeping an eye on what we're seeing, what we're seeing across the board is that in, in math, we're rebounding from the learning interruptions that COVID, you know, that we experienced with COVID faster than we are with reading. So right now, our district focus is on reading and how to return our levels back to pre-COVID. And that's always, our benchmark has always been looking to stay above eighty percent. And what we're seeing is we're getting there. We're getting close to pre-COVID numbers as we move forward in, in most, in most grades, and we'll see where we're not, and then we'll talk about what we're doing later on.
And just, just real quick, so these are, these are last year's numbers, right? Twenty-one, twenty-two?
Twenty-one, twenty-two.
And then just, did you say the benchmark is just with STAR right now, but you're working on integrating other avenues to look at how we're hitting benchmark?
Yes, we're, we're looking to integrate multiple measures to determine what, STAR is one measure, and it's, and it's been, it's been very valuable in terms of you having something to, to base proficiency on in lieu of the state tests, which we have a very high opt-out, not opt-out, test refusal rate here in Somers. And so those, those state assessments are important to look at on an individual basis, and they provide data for the students who take them. But programmatically, we need to really rely on our internal assessments in order to, to examine programs and curriculum and instructional practices to make programmatic changes. And so in order, since we have been using STAR and we're relying on that, we also want to integrate more measures like DIBELS, like iXL, and, you know, of course, classroom performance to get a fuller and broader picture of how students are performing at each level.
I would be so curious to see, Claire, what happens to these performance levels if you, when you start using iXL, ELA? I don't know if any of you have, have kids in those iXL, ELA program, but it is really the feedback that the kids get and the autonomy they have to, to then go back in and sort of work on those skills is beyond what they had in this, in this work. So thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you. And that's what we're hearing from teachers and students and parents, is that STAR, STAR is great, but iXL allows students to engage with their own learning and get a, get a sense of, of growth from, from a much more periodic way of examining it throughout the year and having control over it and access to it. SIS, we're seeing similar numbers again. We're, you know, we're of course aware of the fact that students are rebounding in mathematics from learning interruptions at a, at a quicker rate than they are in reading. And so at SIS, the team has recommitted to foundations, recommitted to Fontis and Pennell, but also engaged the full faculty in professional learning around the science of reading twice this year, and are inviting our science of reading specialists back again at the end of the year, and integrating those explicit literacy instructional practices into every classroom to target in on those literacy skills that need more attention this year. And as I said before, we'll see the mid-year data for this current year later on, and we'll see that some of those strategies are, are paying off and are having a positive impact on literacy at the elementary level.
Claire, if it's all right, just as you move on, one of the, one of the questions that was asked before was the, the tiering of Level Three and Level Four breakdowns, which, really, that's more of a state identified breakdown system that the state has employed there. Where we've gone is looking at those three level meeting and approaching and below benchmark. So it's different, different assessments, so I think that's an important piece of the thing. If we wouldn't have breakdowns by fourth, where these are demonstrated by percentile gains. You could bring them, break them out by ten percentiles and things, but the district has identified, following typical federal guidelines and looking at forty-first percentiles are often considered being on benchmark. So we didn't break it down further to another area. The state does break it down into four separate categories. Again, these are, those assessments fall winter and spring for us each year, so that's how that's broken down. That's how the, the Learning Office, and as well as the teachers out in the buildings, identified to break those down into those three buckets. Whilst the state does break it down into four, the determination was by Learning Office to break those down into those three areas, meeting, approaching, and below bucket. So just following up.
The four would be up to twenty-five, up to fifty, up to seventy-five, and is it?
Not from the state. It's usually rescaled every year by a scaled score and percentage of kids that fall in each one of those buckets, so that has a fluid number.
They rescale every year?
They typically rescale every year, yeah. Especially coming out of COVID, they'll rescale it.
Interesting. Thank you.
So that's where a piece that will scan theirs and stuff, so. Thanks, Claire.
Sure.
Do you like, you like this graphic with the chairs, right?
I do.
This is a good one.
Representing the, the test refusal rates from, from K to four, from three to five. And we do, we are, you know, our test refusal rate is very high. We are fourth in the county for test refusal rate, very high in our, in our district. And so, like I said before, we, this information is, is useful for students who take the exam, see assessments, and then, but for programmatic, large-scale change, we really do rely on our internal benchmark assessments. And when, as we see, we'll see, you know, we can, we can look in, so for the year 2021, this was, we had higher refusal rates post-COVID than we have previously. So it's, it's only increasing so far, and still, we, you know, we want to, even with that, we want to make, you know, continue to see these numbers get back to where they were a few years ago.
I have a question on this refusal rate. First of all, how are we compared with other schools in this refusal thing?
We're fourth in the state. So we're fourth in Westchester County? High, we're very high, high compared to others.
Okay.
Only three other schools have more people that opt out than us.
In Westchester County.
My second question is, the refusal is probably not included in the performance chart, right?
That's right.
So how would, do you have anything separately assessing the refusal students?
Yeah, that's where our internal benchmarks, that's why they're so important, because all students take our internal benchmark assessments, like STAR and now DIBELS, well, AIS students for DIBELS, and then IXL will be for ELA and math.
At this point, a gut feeling, are they impacting the performance better or worse? If you, if you had to include those refusal students into the performance?
Yeah, it's kind of hard to guess, and I wouldn't want to take a guess, and I don't know exactly the answer.
It seems like those first numbers, those first data points that we had that showed that, you know, for instance, in the SIS slide, that seventy-five percent were at or above reading and eighty-four at or above math, seems to be a higher number and seemingly more optimistic than these data points are showing us here on the statewide assessments. Is that?
Yes, and that could be for, that's, I mean, that's certainly true. It looks like on our benchmark, on our internal assessments, more students are reaching benchmark and reaching proficiency. But parents refuse the assessments for their students for various reasons, test anxiety, learning differences, or just a disagreement with the philosophy. So it's hard to determine, but that is a good point, that our benchmark assessments are more positive.
Sorry, I don't mean to cut you. Is it safe to assume then, Claire, the STAR assessments are also, there's a national benchmark, yeah?
Yeah.
So it's not as if it's just us or a teacher's coming up with the test? I mean, these are, these are seemingly somewhat valid, somewhat reliable indicators that we're using on a regular basis.
Yes.
So you could argue that, you know, whether they're better or not, fine, but at least students are taking more of these assessments more regularly, and they are standardized nationally, so that the scores that you shared above with those pie charts are likely more representative than the ones below with the bar charts?
Yes, definitely.
Is that a safe assumption?
Yes, which is why we chose STAR when the test refusal rate became so high. We start, we integrated using it because it could be nationally normed, and we could examine data compared to other districts throughout the country.
And you get the data back very quickly versus the state exams.
It's immediate, yeah.
By the time you get the data, it's.
They're in the next grade.
Next year.
Right, so the state assessments, we say is an autopsy, right? Where the benchmark assessments impact instruction.
Well, and then the IXL, not to harp on that, but the immediate feedback is so granular that you can take it immediately and apply it.
Yeah.
Right, it's not just here's what you received in this test or, you know, whatever, but it's, and here's where you can go next to improve it. So especially for parents seeing it at home, we say, oh, this is what we need to work on together.
Much more specificity and access to the specificity in the IXL.
It's feedback, real time.
Yep.
Yeah.
So the middle school, you know, the middle school we're seeing here, similar numbers in terms of support, but we're not seeing the growth that we would have, that we want to see in terms of reading and math is catching up again, like the other buildings, much more faster, they're rebounding in math. And so the team has already begun the process of examining literacy at the middle school level and how we can positively impact that growth. So over the, you know, over the course of last year, I think we all know, we've integrated the what I need period into the full SMS schedule, and this year for eighth grade, bringing academic intervention to all students who need it multiple times a week. As well, the ELA team has started to look at its curriculum, looking for deeper resources to increase, you know, to address literacy needs of students. Because of the success that the elementary and the math in this building have seen with IXL, all teachers were trained in IXL ELA this year at the middle school level, just recently, in the past couple of months, and started to pilot that with their ELA classrooms. And early on, what we're seeing early on is it's having a positive effect for students and parents. And then we think about moving on. So we've integrated DIBELS for all students in AIS here at Somers Middle School to again try to address those early literacy skills, skill gaps that we can see through those assessments. And as we move forward, we'll continue to look for ways to support the team here that it has been dedicated to and working on interdisciplinary literacy skills, so taking literacy on as a whole building issue, certainly not just the ELA team, and then providing professional learning for all teachers on how to integrate explicit literacy instruction into all content areas to address the gaps that the data, that the assessments are showing for our students. We'll continue to partner with that team and provide the supports necessary and watch the data closely to fill, you know, to help in those, to help the students grow in their literacy needs. As well, we are also integrating those multiple measures so that we can determine the accuracy that the STAR data is showing us in terms of students' literacy needs here at the middle school. And for math, it's growing, rebounding faster, and we'll see from our mid-year report for this year later that it's, they're growing even more. So progress being made there.
Now, is it safe to assume if we put the refusal students into the middle school performance chart, it will bring that number down further?
No.
No, I apologize, I'm confused with the question.
Yeah, sorry.
You know, there's since, like in math, one-third of the student refused, right? So if you put those, somehow we have some way of evaluating them, are they impacting the performance chart even further? I mean, the performance, seventy-seven percent.
No, because all of the children, the N, all kids are included in there, let's say there's six hundred kids at the school, they're all included in the internal assessment chart, and yet only four hundred are included in the state chart. So the reality is, is there's not an adding to them, they're just not included in the numbers. So that's where we rely upon our internal assessments to hopefully drive and make our instructional decisions, knowing that a third or more, depending upon the grade level, are not taking that assessment. So they're really two different pieces.
Right, right. That's why I was, I want to know whether the blue chart, this pie chart number is on the more favorable side or on the less favorable side?
It sounds like the opposite is true to what he's, if I understand, you're asking if the inclusion of those additional refusals.
Yeah.
Were in the state test, would the scores go down? And I think the answer is, no one really knows because the state test, but also.
But we could know if we have our own test in some comparison.
These are our own tests, and so because they are our own tests, and they're different tests, they're different than the state test, but they are showing that the scores are seemingly higher. I don't know if they're significantly higher. They do look, to me, untrained, not running a P, you know, no analysis here, but they do look like they're higher for the internal assessments that are nationally normed than the national state test.
So the other piece I want to go back to is you're looking at a four, a scale of four versus, and a scale of three. So you can't directly compare those as well either. And so you've got from this. Right, but the percentage there that's proficient or above, which is two out of the four.
One-third is still quite a significant number, I mean, that's.
Yeah. So that's, I'm just.
Yeah, but you can't compare.
No, no, they're just two different things, apples and oranges. The one comparison is, is they are aligned back to the same state standards, and so the performance on one, it's just getting to, the end journey is the state standards, and one gets there maybe through a Fiat, and the other one is going to go ahead and drive a Jaguar to get there. They both get to the same destination, but we can't compare exactly how they're going to get there because one is a very different. The STAR test is a computer adaptive test again, so we don't want to forget that piece. It's given on the computer. The student drives where that assessment's going to go. If I get more questions right, it gets more challenging. If I get maybe a few wrong, it brings me down to where my zone of proximal development might be. The state test is the same questions, the same piece for every single kid that sits in there. So it's difficult, I would say, for us to compare even those two types of assessments. They're very different, as you know, from each other, so. We use that, as Claire said before, individual student takes the assessment, we look at it as an individual piece, because from a programmatic lens, it's not there. And I think that's where Claire was walking us through to the kind of program piece with the middle school, and we're talking about from a programmatic lens, from our internal assessments, that's the investments the teachers have been spending time in here looking at.
Yes, and if the question is, are we replicating the state assessment and mandating all students take that, so that we can compare, we're not, we're not doing that. That would, we're choosing instead assessments that can actually inform instruction throughout the course of the year and help us understand the students' needs so that we can meet them immediately as opposed to at the culmination of a year as a summative assessment.
And Claire, because of the high refusal rate, you can't even really use that as a data point in some instances, if I'm correct, right? Because of, like, there's some places where you don't even have students to measure, right? Is that?
Yes, the real value is an individual student. So it's an additional data point for the students who take the assessment, because that does provide valuable summative information. But as a whole, for, like we said before, for large-scale change, curricular changes, programmatic changes, there, can't discount thirty percent of the population to make those changes, we need to find a more holistic way of assessing. The middle school assessments are similar, very high test refusal rates, and the middle school in post-COVID, higher refusal rates than before. Just draw your attention to, just one thing I want to point out is math eight is the year that some students in eighth grade take the algebra Regents exam. Those are the students who are accelerated in mathematics, and their year culminates in the New York State Regents examination in algebra. Those students do not take the math exam. So that's the first year where the students are, all students are not taking the math eight, who don't refuse, if that makes sense.
I want to ask a question whether, on the school science, grade eighth level, the score, the bar, the blue bar of the average, the county average is much less than ours, right?
The black bars?
That's a good thing, of course, and I don't know whether that's attributed to our science research program or something.
Well, it's eighth grade, so they haven't been in science research yet.
No, but the influence from the science, ninth grade will be science programs, so this eighth grade score.
Yeah, I would certainly want to attribute it to the teachers.
That is a correlation, of course. The science programs helping pull, pull the, you know, the middle school scores up.
It certainly may be providing motivation for students to be more engaged and interested, and of course, the teachers who are adjusting to.
Only number that really significantly higher than the average, right, Ray?
It is, I just wouldn't want to fault one way or the other on one data point.
I want to get the cause, you know, because if we understand why, we should, you know, spend more money or do more.
So one of the things is, we'll see that science last year, as we look at the eighth grade earth science piece, did not take place anymore in eighth grade.
It's a good question to drill into.
Yeah.
Because the earth science did not take place, you think that that inflated the other science?
Yeah, because those children are taking earth science typically before, and so now you're having, again, I'll just remind it, it's still only two-thirds of the kids are taking the test, but we have a number of students who used to take the earth science exam who are no longer taking the earth science, are taking the traditional science eighth grade exam.
So then you might, I guess what Ray might be saying then is that we might see next year with the math, right, with more folks not taking that advanced accelerated math?
And you.
That you'll see those numbers going up parallel, not because of science research, but simply because of the composition of the classes.
Correct, and, yep.
Is that fair?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, and you probably said this, but is the science, I'm assuming the science refusal rate is the same as the math in the ELA roughly? Because it's not on there, I was just curious.
The, it is, it is close, yeah, it's pretty close. And it, and it does grow a little bit as the kids get older.
Why you refuse everything?
In eighth grade versus the students in sixth grade. So but there's, it bounces every year to year, so we put in some high level generally, one out of three or one out of four.
Okay.
And then off to the high school.
So ninety-five percent of our students graduate Somers High School in four years, and then we also have many kids who are not on a traditional four-year path. And so if we look at a six-year graduation rate, ninety-nine percent of our students graduate in six years. And as you can see from this, this data is representing with the class of 2022, so last year's graduating class, what their post-secondary plans were.
On this score, I think we are better than average. Do we have the Westchester sort of average graduation rate for every school?
For year?
You would be able to, yeah, the state has the four-year and six-year rates at the state level.
So how much better we are compared?
Well, the ninety-nine percent, I don't, the state average is typically, if you're looking at state level, it's in the seventies. If you're looking at the Westchester area, we're right in where we would typically be. You're talking, depending upon what year you're looking at, anywhere from ninety-three to ninety-six percent each year, bounces up and down, so, yep.
Okay.
The six-year piece is, I think, is a key part where the district and the teachers work to, if a student needs more time, the reality is then they just need some more time to complete their studies, and then they're ninety-nine percent of the kids are graduating.
And also perhaps that would include more, sometimes special ed students take a little more, longer time to graduate.
It could, it could include other students as well for some other supports that they need in place as well, too, so.
Yeah. Very good, thank you.
Thanks, yep.
So we'll start looking at some of the Regents scores from the high school. And first starting with English, the English Regents has kind of maintained throughout, and then we'll just remember that 2021 was an optional Regents year, and so the N might have been a little lower in that testing year. And also, 2021 represented a hybrid year. We had full students, students from K through six in every day, but students seven through twelve were in every other day in 2021. And then the history Regents just requires some explanation, because you'll see that we don't have four full years of data to show, and so I'll explain each one. So the global history, two Regents is a new Regents. The New York State Regents decided to transition from the old global history and geography Regents that we, if you, you may remember, was a two-year course. It was the only Regents exam that was administered based on a two-year curriculum, ninth and tenth grade global history and geography, and it culminated in tenth grade with the Regents examination. Back in 2019 was the first administration of the new exam that assessed students only on the tenth grade global history and geography curriculum and was, is more skills-based, moving away from kind of recall multiple choice, regular multiple choice questions. The old Regents was fifty multiple choice questions, short answers, and two essays. And the new exam is based more on documents and the skills that are, the New York State framework has identified as students needing to be successful in social studies. So 2019 represents the first year of the global history, two Regents for Somers students. 2020, there was no exam because of COVID. 2021 was an optional year, and no students took the exam. And so then we have 2022 as the second administration of the new global history, two Regents examination in Somers, and that's represented by the light blue bar for global history. United States Regents is also an interesting story. We have here 2018 data, normal, old, or the soon-to-be-old exam. We have 2019 data, 2020, there was no Regents in U.S. history, 2021, it was optional, no students chose to take the exam. And 2022, last year, the U.S. Regents was canceled due to a question discrepancy after printing. So we only have the two years displayed so far. And hopefully, next year, we'll see this year's data represented on these charts to better round it out. But we should also mention that this year, the United States History Regents will be the first transition exam, because they're doing, they're transitioning like they did with the global history Regents, they're starting that process with the United States History Regents. So we'll have a transition year in between old and new, and then eventually we'll transition fully to the new U.S. Regent, U.S., United States History Regents that's based on the new frameworks and the skills that are represented in those frameworks.
So we've further sort of.
We'll have further gaps in U.S. history, yeah.
But the exams themselves, right? So our kids have to take four to get the Regents diploma, right? And these are now two separate choices, as opposed to historically where there were one choice after two years of programming, correct?
No, I mean, the global, they've always been two, global history or United States history, most students take both of those unless they have another exam that could fulfill their fourth requirement.
So just this global history two is the one that has undergone sort of the biggest of the makeovers then? This is the one that's had the biggest change, and now it's hopefully going to be leveling out? Is that what we're thinking we'll see?
Yeah, so for the foreseeable future, students will be taking the global two Regents, and then United States, they're still going to take it, it's just going to be in different forms for the next couple of years, the transition exam, and then they'll land on the final version of the United States History exam, and then, so going forward, we'll have two new exams that students will take. version of the United States History exam. And then so going forward, we'll have two new exams that students will take.
Thank you.
Again, we have our, we have our algebra Regents data shown here. You know, paying close attention to the hybrid year and looking at it and and then finding, you know, finding confidence in the fact that the 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 students are rebounding with full years of instruction. And we are optimistic that that trend will continue as we move forward and put more space in between the the learning interruptions from COVID and and our current experience. And then finally, we have our science Regents.
Claire, can I ask on the algebra, does that include the eighth graders who took it then? Or is that handled separately?
It does. So that was that this, this data includes eighth graders. So anyone who opted to take the exam in twenty one, this data represents. And the same goes for our our science Regents, paying close attention to earth science and looking to increase the growth to pre-COVID numbers. The team is is focusing on that and continuing to move forward positively. The not all students, no students took the chemistry Regents in the following years, which is why the data isn't there.
Well, on the science, I wonder why is the earth science is lot worse than the other two science category, chemistry and living environment? Are we equally applying the faculty distribution on these science topics? How many teachers are in the earth science versus the living environment and chemistry?
Yeah, I mean, the number of FTE, the full-time educators who are allocated to each grade subject area depends on the enrollment in each class. So if students, if if we keep our class sizes, as we all know, usually between twenty and twenty five students, if not smaller. And so if that many students enroll in earth science, that's how many teachers are allocated to that subject area.
So you don't think it's a faculty ratio, but this seventy percent is certainly much less than eighty four, eighty five percent, right? And also, the science program in high school, I know that this earth science is a category that has so many applicants, so many students doing earth science. So I I just wonder why we would have lower sort of score here. It's not correlating with what I understand. If you go into a science program today, I mean, probably thirty five percent the the research work is done on earth science.
So if you had the two bars that you're seeing there, there's a significant decrease in the number of students that are taking those particular science courses. Because again, earth science is not a requirement.
The test score, earth science, twenty twenty two is certainly much less, right?
Right. And so just for example, in the twenty twenty two school year, there's a hundred and five children who took that assessment. Then pre-COVID, there was two hundred and forty six.
Anyway, my question
Hold on a second.
Need to, we need to find the, you know, consolidate, yeah, yeah.
No, no, no.
Oh, we were looking at scores.
Data points are important because we are, you know, educators trying to find, you know, this for public school. We want everybody to excel. The more you understand the data, the more you really apply the resources correctly, the better you get your, you know.
Absolutely. And and if, you know, what what we know and what we are working with our regional partners with, too, is you'll notice that the black bar, which represents our Putnam Northern Westchester Regional Partners, are experiencing that same decline. And so it's it's leading into conversations as to, you know, what's going on and why isn't earth science rebounding as quickly as other subjects? Post-COVID. And so you're right, it's an area to be looking deeper into and trying to find out how we can increase that growth.
Wasn't earth science also similar to algebra in the sense that we had eighth graders that were taking that Regents historically? And maybe are not accessing it now as they had previously in previous years?
Yes. So all now that earth sci, now in these years, the earth science, the students are only ta, are opting to take it in high school and they're not representing students who were accelerated in middle school.
So might that be part of what we're seeing here? That there's maybe competition between the courses that they're taking or when they're taking them or what region they're taking to cover the science? I'm making this up. I have no idea.
Well, right. So students who traditionally might have chosen to opt to take earth science in eighth grade, might moving into ninth grade and and looking to take Principles of Biomedical Science instead. And so that, you know, they're being funneled possibly away from earth science and at the high school level.
So they're not even accessing it in the first place?
But there's, we can
Yeah.
take it into a little more.
Thank you, Claire.
So we're looking at our SAT and ACT five-year trends. We'll note that there's a precipitous drop in in the amount of students taking SATs, which we anticipate will continue as many colleges and universities are making the SAT and the ACT optional for admission and not requiring those those examinations, those assessments for admission as we move forward. So keep an eye on our students' progress and also the number of students taking them as we, as we move forward.
I think, I think going forward and interest, you know, we we know our population in each grade is 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 coming down. So seeing percentage of our population that takes it, to me, would be a little more interesting than the
The number? Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. So we're number one. We're number one in the region from Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIS Consortium for the number of AP and IB courses that we offer with that number being thirty five AP and IB courses offered at Somers High School. And with that, we are also number two in the same consortium for the number of students who earn a three or higher on AP exams. So increased offerings, increased enrollment, performance is stable, if not growing, in both AP and IB. So something we're, you know, the high school is very proud of and demonstrates the the work and commitment to supporting students in rigorous courses as as they progress through high school.
And a three or higher in most instances will help students in college, right? It will help them sort of buy out of those entry level courses and sometimes even graduate earlier. Is that?
Absolutely. So different colleges and universities have a different standard. It's either three is the usually the lowest score that a college will accept for college, for a course for college credit. Some accept four, but many, many accept threes. And so that's, that's considered proficient in that area. And students can then move on to the next level of topic. But even we find, the research shows that students who even do not get a three and may get a one or a two, the research shows that just engaging in that level of coursework and setting for the exam helps them to do better on that that course later on in college and just helps their overall ability to engage in rigorous coursework moving forward. So it's, 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 it's pretty positive all around. And then if we look at our enrollment over
The other note on that, too, is the, with colleges moving away from the SAT and ACT, I would assume they're looking more and more for students to take more, you know, these type of classes?
Yes, it's rigorous courses and performance in those courses is something that many colleges look at, but that's not the only thing, but it is important. As we, we may recall, reporting here at the board over the course of many years, Somers High School's SMART goal, their stretch goal, was increasing in student enrollment in upper level academic courses, AP and IB enrollment. And so as you can see, they have really succeeded in reaching their goal with almost forty percent increase from twenty eighteen to last year of students engaged in AP or IB courses over the past five years. Drilling down just a little deeper into that, if we look at just the class of twenty twenty two, we see that seventy one percent of our seniors last year took one, at least one AP or IB course, and thirty percent of them took three or more. And then fifty something percent took two or more. So students are engaging in the, in the course offerings that we have available to them at the high school. But more than just engaging, they're also performing very well. So, you know, a hundred students received AP Scholar Awards from the College Board for performing well on their AP assessments last year from the class of twenty twenty two. And then if we look at the historical performance of students in AP courses, we see that even with the thirty seven point five increase in enrollment in these courses, the student performances remain is 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 very stable to what it has been even with that increased enrollment. With over, with eighty one percent of the students performing and earning a three or more on the AP assessments of those who took it.
It's impressive that they rebounded to the twenty twenty scores pretty quickly.
Yeah, that's excellent.
And the same goes for IB. So IB performance proficiency is four or higher. IB scale, assessment scale is a one to a seven. So four or more is generally considered proficient. And even though we've been implementing IB in courses for five years, there's really only been two normal testing years because of COVID. So that we, so we're really looking at twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and then twenty twenty two. Because twenty twenty and twenty twenty one were not traditional. Some the tests were optional, some some assessments, they used internal assessments to determine. And so we might, we might see a jump in there that's not necessarily accurate to how the student performance is real, is is, you know, what's really happening. So we look, if we look at twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen and twenty twenty two, we do see that students as, as teachers and students become more familiar with the IB curriculum and the approaches of teaching and learning, that their performance on the assessments continues, is is growing and continuing to grow. And that's a, you know, a great testament to a building that that adopted a new, a new, a new program and engage in professional learning around it and as, you know, integrating it very successfully.
So you're saying to compare apples to apples, really, you would be looking at eighteen, nineteen and twenty two to show that they took both the internal and external assessments and
That's right.
the scores went up quite a bit.
Yes. Significantly. And then with eighty two percent of the students who sat earning a four or higher.
So what I think is interesting, and I know we can't make a correlation here, is that we have a significant increase in the number of students who are accessing these courses, which is also then simultaneously increasing their scores, right, for higher eighty two percent, which is pretty extraordinary. So then to Efe's earlier point, again, not great to correlate here, but the idea is with more people accessing this test and these courses, they seem to be increasing their scores. So you might assume that if more folks were taking certain tests, those scores also would increase. That would be a hypothesis, but it does look like that when you have more folks accessing all of these programs, I mean, starting up at the beginning with the thirty five course offerings and number two in Westchester of of the scores, three and higher.
Yeah, Putnam Northern Westchester BOSIS. And and it's a testament to supports that are provided to students when they need them. So such as the Writing Center, the Academic Support Center. You know, the, the whole idea is, you know, engage in rigorous coursework and provide supports for students, all students, to reach success.
That's terrific.
And then finally, we just, we don't want, and we focus a lot on APIB, but we want to recognize that there are other rigorous courses that that are available to round out every child's experience at Somers High School, depending on their passion area. And so of course, Efe talked about science research, which is a very popular program and robust program. You know, students can choose to engage in three years of authentic research partnered with a community expert partner and to, and to, you know, and culminating in science competitions in which every year our students are recognized at the local, regional, state and and national level in the science competitions. And so last year, we had fifty nine students participating in science research. And I think we all know, we host the, we now host the WSF Science Fair at the end of the year. We just got the request to reserve the gym for that. And it's a, it's a point of pride for our district and students. You know, explore passion areas in real world research. And it's a, it's a very positive experience for students. And then, and then finally, we also just want to remind or point out to people who may not know that we also partner with a number of universities to offer students the opportunity to engage in college level coursework while still in high school and earning credit towards those content areas. So many, our project, many of our project Lead the Way courses are partnered with the University of Rochester, in which students can earn college credits before graduating high school. We also partner with Syracuse University, Westchester Community College, SUNY Albany for the courses listed here. So students can pursue passion areas and earn college credit before graduating.
Forgive me if you've mentioned this, Claire, but the science research, fifty nine participants, that's in which amount of years? Is it in the brief, the past year? When, like, what is this, just for twenty one, twenty two, twenty two, twenty three?
Just twenty, tw, last year.
So last year alone, a cumulative number of fifty nine students across the school accessed the science research program.
That's right.
And then on the left-hand side here, where we see the advanced college Italian and calculus and college Spanish and project Lead the Way Engineering. So we see twenty, sixty, a hundred students getting essentially college credits in high school for the programs that they're, that they're accessing.
They're enrolled in those courses. And again, if they reach specific benchmarks, they can receive college credit depending on the university guidelines and depending on their performance.
But supported by the teachers in the schools
Yes.
accessing the same curriculum that they need to then be successful down the road if they choose a four year or two year.
Yes. And those universities monitor, you know, meet with the teachers or in contact with teachers to ensure the integrity of the curriculum that's being taught at the high school.
Excellent. Thank you.
Oh.
We got the next one, Claire.
There's more.
It's a lot shorter. Shorter. As Claire switches that out, so this is kind of where we would anticipate moving forward in a February meeting. This is the mid-year. So this is the admission for students this year in the twenty two, twenty three school year, specific to their identified kind of SMART goals that they put out in each one of the schools. So Claire, walk us through that quickly as we look at that. So thanks, Claire.
Sure. So.
Did we talk about next year, what do we expect IB?
So again, we
Is he predicted? I hope he's predicted for us, yeah.
We administer three times a year for all students in tier one. We administer the benchmark assessments to determine progress and growth and proficiency targets. For students in academic intervention support, that these assessments are administered five times a year so we can get the closer watch on them. But for for most students, we monitor winter, fall, winter and spring. And so for, if we look at Primrose, Primrose Building SMART goal this year was to increase ELA benchmark proficiency to seventy seven percent. So they started the year with sixty two students reaching proficiency. And their mid-year winter assessments are evidencing seventy eight percent. So we're, we're very, they've already met their SMART goal target. And now looking to continue to grow and get above that eighty percent, which is really where we, we want, we always want to live and be and keep growing from there. SIS, similar stories, started the year with sixty nine percent of students reaching proficiency. Their mid-year is showing progress toward their eighty one percent goal and with a seventy five percent students reaching proficiency in the, in the winter STAR assessment. And finally, we have Somers Middle School. And we, we looked at that data already, sixty two percent reaching proficiency, proficiency, not seeing the growth we want. And so we're, we're looking large-scale programmatic changes as to how we can support teachers and students in SMS to develop those literacy skills needed to show growth in those proficiency targets. Their goal for the end of the year is seventy two percent and looking to support them with professional learning, further resources, and considering, looking at bringing in external literacy consultants to to help all teachers teach reading, which secondary teachers not necessarily always train in how to teach kids how to read and how to do explicit literacy instruction and integrate it into the content areas. And so that's something we're looking to do so that students are receiving that at all levels of the high school in all classes to help this, to help the middle school reach its proficiency targets.
So that's going to come in, sorry, that's good, that helps going to come in this year for the students this year?
Yeah. So we've already started, the teams already come together. They've looked at what they're doing, the strengths and what's, what's, what's working. But then what are the opportunities for for reaching our goals and helping students continue to reach, you know, to to reach proficiency at our, in literacy?
So this is based on the same data that we saw previously on the pie charts, right? But this is more granular, showing change over time and the growth over the course of the school year, which
Yeah, it's minimal growth over the course of the school year. So last year's pie charts were just twenty one, twenty two data.
Sure.
And this, this is representing real time what's happening this school year in Somers Middle School.
Using the internal assessment, right?
But it's the same STAR assessment that we're using, correct? So it's the same type of assessment. So there's, I guess what I'm trying to say is that there's some consistency in the type of data that we're looking at.
Yes, yes.
It's not pulling from over here and pulling from over here and putting them together.
No.
So this is the exact same assessment that we just shared before. But then it's going to drive sort of the need for what we're going to see in the budget upcoming in terms of where the FTE lives and where sort of programmatically things are going to be shifting around moving forward. Is that?
Yes, that's exactly right. So we've, so for example, because of the data we saw in last year's report, we've implemented a reading lab here at Somers. last year's report, we've implemented a reading lab here at Somers Middle School to, you know, target in on reading instruction for students who are demonstrating need. And what we're adding a second date to that this school year, because the the students are demonstrating that need. And so and then we'll the moving forward, we'll think about how do we how do we bring together a literacy consultant and professional learning for all faculty at Somers Middle School, so that we can help replicate the measures and interventions that have been, we've seen success with at the elementary level, engaging faculty in the in professional learning around the science of reading, targeted skill-based instruction, explicit literacy instruction in the classroom, replicating those successes here at the middle school for 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 the students as they move up through the grades.
Thank you.
Again, theme theme continues that the rebounding in math is we see a greater rebound post-COVID. Primrose started at 70% proficiency on STAR assessments. And mid-year, they surpassed, they've already surpassed their SMART goal of 80% and with a mid-year of 85% of students reaching proficiency at Primrose. SIS Similar started the year at 80, 80%, have a goal of 85. They've already surpassed that at 87% proficiency, and and looking to continue up. And Somers Middle School started at 75% proficiency, much closer to their goal. Their goal is 82%. And they're 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 working their way towards that with the mid-year assessment reporting 79% of students reaching proficiency on their math, internal math assessments in STAR. And then finally, nationwide, a large percentage of schools nationwide have reported increased absence rate in the post-pandemic existence of schools. And so and that was the same for Somers High School. And so this for Somers High School, as we talked about, for many years, the stretch goal was to increase student enrollment in AP and IB courses or rigorous courses over a five-year period. And then this year, the 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 goal that unified everyone's efforts at the high school was to to work to increase student engagement and attendance. And so what we see here is on the left is last year's attendance rate, absent rate. So percentage of students who are absent and percentage of days they're absent. And their SMART goal at Somers High School this year is to decrease that federal absence rate by 10%. And and all members of the faculty and staff are engaged in efforts that will mitigate absences. And so we've we've seen that the summer that the high school has reached its goal of 10% and will continue those efforts to keep students engaged, motivated, coming to school, and engaging in the learning that's available to them there. So also progress and, you know, I mean, very impressive efforts by the high school to reach their goal.
Any questions, folks?
Thanks, Claire.
What do you want?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claire.
Thanks.
As you drop off, we'll go ahead and Chris will go ahead and bring the presentation up here for the conversation regarding the budget. And again, as we continue our budget season conversation, last time we met, we talked about the non-instructional area. And then this evening, we'll be focusing on the instructional area. And then at our subsequent meeting, we'll kind of bring those two together and start putting the full budget anticipation ahead of time. So thanks, Chris. I'll just go ahead and get you started there. Perfect.
February 14th, huh?
Yeah. I think there's a piece of candy on the table in front of me.
All right. So again, here to talk about the 23, 24 budget for next year. A few things that we're going to go over, again, just the budget development process, maximum tax levy limit history, then some indicators of excellence, which really encompasses a lot of what Claire just went through before. Then we do highlight a bunch of the instructional programs at the elementary, secondary, and district level, professional learning that we have budgeted for next year. We look at past and future enrollment. We're projected out till about 29, 2030, just to show where we're headed. And then we have a few staffing changes and adjustments for next year. And then we just bring it all back with the projected salaries and largest benefits for next year. So again, as we've gone through this a few times already this year, we're continuing to move through this budget development process. We're still presenting to the board as we are tonight. Next time in March will be a kind of a summary of what we've done so far, again, leading to an April Board of Ed adoption, and then the budget vote in in May. And this slide is just showing a reminder that annual budget needs to be balanced. So revenues need to match expenses. And these are just some of the largest areas that we have for those revenues and expenses. So this slide here shows the last five years' worth of the maximum tax levy limit. So the the gray is showing you what the actual levy was that the district proposed and the voters voted on. And then the red in some years are showing what the maximum levy that we could have went to. So in 2019, 2020, the maximum levy was just under that $80 million mark, and that's what we levied up to. Then you see in 2021, the maximum levy was about $81.5 million, but we only levied $81.1 million. So about $400,000 under the tax levy limit. And let me just backtrack for one second. The the levy limit, again, a lot of people hear 2% into the calculation. There's a lot of different variables, and there's different exclusions that go into that tax levy cap. So that's why you'll often see that the maximum limit is above that 2% when you factor in some of your debt service and your state aid and transfers to capital. So that drives, those are exclusions which drive the the levy limit above 2%.
And if we ever needed to go above that limit, it is possible, but it requires a
Super majority.
Super majority of the public vote.
Of the voters to approve, yes. And then again, in 21, 22, we went to the went to the actual limit that we had. This current year, 22, 23, we levied about $1.6 million less than the maximum that we could have under the tax levy cap. A large reason for that was the increase in state aid that we received. So again, what we're trying to show here is that we're not going to go to the limit if we don't have to. So those years where maybe there's some additional revenue that's coming in for whatever reason, again, this year just happened to be a large increase in in foundation aid as the state looks to make districts whole that they haven't been for years for some of the foundation aid. So that's why this year there was a, you know, a pretty large discrepancy in the maximum levy and then the actual levy that we did. For 23, 24, as of right now, we're looking at a levy limit that is just shy, just a little over $800,000 less than the maximum that we would to would be allowed to go up to with just a simple majority. So over the last five years or so, it's over $2.8 million below the tax levy that we have not asked the voters to approve.
So the take home is that each year, we have a maximum allowable limit, and we try to stay obviously below that. And you've done a great job of doing that for us, so much so that $2.8 million has not been levied to the rest of the town in terms of excellence.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
So as Chris shifts to the next piece, I'll just drop in here. These are just some of the highlights that the board had just spent some time going through before. Just wanted to pull those in together, some of the indicators that we saw available there. So.
And those will be great next year.
Yep, because it won't be so fresh. Exactly.
Thank you.
So just a couple of examples here. So looking at, for example, like the elementary reading programs, I'll just pull out the Harrody Reading Program here, as was mentioned before by Claire regarding our work on the science of reading. As we went through, you know, the summer and through the fall, that was some some insights and some feedback we received from our partner consultant, the outside, talking about how to work on our and bolstering up even some of our pandemic work even more. So that's an added piece that we were able to bring in there for this year. So that's an example for that campus at the elementary level. And then thinking about the middle school level here, I think folks are certainly aware of, we were just recently accredited here for the middle years program for the sixth grade campus here. And so that was that's continued support, professional learning in that area for our faculty and staff as we move forward with making those pieces. Also, some of the areas regarding AI support as well, too. In particular, one of the things we're looking at next year is to continue. So again, as Claire went through that information there, with our with our math numbers, as Claire said before, we are certainly seeing that rebound coming back to where we were kind of at a at a pre-shutdown for us on March 13th of 2020 there. And now coming back, we would also see the same thing with our ELA programs. It's just not coming back at the pace that we were seeing. So before the the shutdown there, we were at that level where we desire to be. And frankly, at the middle school level, they had started some work, and they were starting to see some improvements in those numbers. And then that kind of dropped them back down. So the idea about the AI support, where with the win period here and the other schools, and and at the high school in particular, our academic support centers, that that takes staffing, that takes ability for staff to work within small groups of children. So again, that that piece is built into the budget as well. So just a couple of examples having there for you.
Thank you.
And then just some of the Student Center program in here. And so these are just some of the areas that in particular, frankly, that we're seeing a continued need of support as as students and families and alike are a need support the from a social and emotional to help support the academic lens. So, you know, our Team Tusker program is back online. We're starting to build our mentor program back with our community. We were almost at 80 children just before COVID broke down. We were we were down just about a dozen. We're starting to build that back up now. So we're getting closer to over 20 now. So it's just taking time to build that back up. Certainly, things like our athletic program, our music programs and things, those are ways and reasons that we want to make sure extra club activities and and different curricular activities are there for kids. So all of those elements do take portions of the budget and looking at those areas and and being part of of the whole envelope of the students. So the next slide is just looking at some of the professional learning. Again, inside here, I know we spoke about science of reading before. Certainly, as Claire mentioned, that is a continued piece and looking at even the spring of having some partnership with our consultant coming back and supporting our elementary schools again with another professional learning day later in the spring. Again, the multi-tiered systems of support, looking at some actually providing an update to our data analysis system that allows easier and more straightforward access to the data information from multiple points. And it's more in a data data visualized, easily consumed way. And so we had a tool actually in the district for about 10 years, a very powerful tool, used very well. And that company was bought out, as you know, some of those successful ones are. And it just ended up not being used by the company that consumed it in the way we were used to it as educators. So we were going ahead and we gave it a go, just wasn't there. So now we're through the spring and summer, getting a new piece that will actually ride inside on top of Infinite Campus, manipulate that data. Most folks may be familiar, it's called Tableau. So it's a very industry standard tool piece there. So we're going to go ahead in that piece, giving us an opportunity for our MTSS teams to get to the data quickly and effectively and and run all different kind of examples of that. Here's the students who had this intervention put in place. How are they doing in relationship to those students who maybe did not have the intervention? So gives us a chance to look at some of those results.
Will parents also have the opportunity to sort of see where their kids are in real time with access to that with that tool? I'm just curious.
Not through Tableau, no. What we would do is continue to use the information through Infinite Campus and some of that pieces. We are seeing things like iXL, though, will probably be opportunities for us to be able to use that. And as kids are using that on a at a very frequent basis. So we see that definitely being opportunities opening up more. We started with math. And as you mentioned before, ELA now is coming online. Actually, I think Claire mentioned before, this campus, they accelerated their timeline of moving from a piloting piece in the fall because it really worked so well. They're looking to go ahead and do a a full school baseline assessment from iXL on ELA. So they've, again, picked up their timeline as well, too, because the urgency they see, and they're looking at the assessments they put in place, let's, we've got a good response, let's just go ahead and move that now. So they're going to be doing that here right now in the February piece. So we get a mid-year check-in, all kids on that. So.
Could you share for a moment, just for folks who might have missed it, what is meant by win period optimization?
So depending upon each campus, there was an opportunity for the SIS campus went and looked at some of their piece. So the ability for us to really think about other times to have that be a little more frequent in the student's schedule, particularly at the middle school here, what they looked at is they went back to their schedule where their schedule rotates. And then they have a fixed period that allows for no other interruptions to take place in there. So it's a locked period. So that optimization there provide an opportunity for students to be able to get those academic supports they need without missing out on some of the things that maybe they would have traditionally done. And so that's an opportunity for us to really, as best we can, balance both worlds. Because it's great to have access to electives and things. That's a part that's coming and needing additional time on task.
Support.
Yes.
Yeah. And can I just add for from the middle school perspective, I could just say that, too, is what they've tweaked over the past three years of using the win period is this is the third iteration, but I think it's working out really well. And what they do is they rotate it with like Mondays, when you pick your courses for the week, Tuesdays, a content literacy rotated on the subject area, and then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday are used for either enrichment or help. And the teachers and the students can kind of control where the kids are going and what they could get and what they need.
And I'm glad you shared that, Amanda, because the reality is, is I I want to compliment our faculty leadership team here, because the safer thing would have been to do to wait like till this whole thing was behind us.
Yeah.
And then kind of start with a new schedule. I give a lot of credit for giving that piece and working it through, because we're in a much better place today. If we would have waited till this year, then we'd be that farther behind. So I want to compliment that team for getting that going. So the next piece I mentioned a little bit earlier before, one of the questions regarding the enrollment and looking at those numbers. And so, again, not broken down to the demographic enrollment on this particular side, we can certainly bring that forth. But what we are seeing is that, again, at our Primrose level, that that approximately represents Somers around a 25 to to 75 ratio with with students that are not white, students that are white. Now, that piece will move its way through the high school and the middle schools. The board there at the bottom, Primrose, you can see where those numbers are floating there. Again, as you go out there a little bit, 27, 28, 28, 29, those numbers drop below 500. That's kind of live birth rate. So those will be updated as we come through. We do have a couple of classes right next to each other. For example, like second grade, they're right around 205. The class below was about 160. So we've got like, woo, a couple of bumps like that. But even 200, again, is what we would see our numbers coming through for a while. And then they see the SIS campuses basically leveled out towards enrollment is going to be a middle school campus there in the orange. And then the blue, you can see that blue line in there. So you can start to see that kind of slope coming down until approximately 25, 26, 27 school year, that's going to float around 800 students. So on the next slide, you're going to see the decline enrollment at the high school, and then you will see some staff changes in in relationship to that. So at the high school, again, I'll start at the bottom there, where you'll see a reduction in FTE in the science area. Again, that's handled through an attrition through a retirement, special education, attrition through a retirement, same with art with a resignation there. And so with those elements, the programmatic piece is not dropping, we're not losing, you know, courses, offerings and things. We just have less students, so you have less sections of those courses. So actually, we're looking at adding, you know, next year, a performance and literature course next year. Gives us an opportunity to have some more students be involved in the LA and things like that. Science is actually bringing on a couple of different electives. They're going to rotate in and out in opposite years with each other. So the growth continues. It's just making sure how we can do that in a in a logical, intelligent way, so that you're not offering all six, you maybe have two come on, two go off, so kids can cycle through those over a couple of years and see that. So it's going to take a little bit of planning and understand, oh, it's not available this year, but oh, it's going to be back online next year. So if you're interested in that, you can go ahead and see that coming. And so and then we do have some realignment here as we're looking at some of the staffing at the high school for world language. Now, with that decline enrollment, being able to shift over to the SIS campus to help it go from third to fourth to fifth grade now with the world language. And then some PE realignment as we looking at are looking at some of those larger numbers going up from Primrose to SIS. They need a little bit of a FTE over there, and while that's causing a realignment.
So it looks like you're looking to address some of the ELA questions that we've had with those realignment pieces to the middle school. I see the Orton Gillingham reading position.
Yes.
So those seem to be very focused on addressing.
Very much so. And that's to help look at the SIS middle school campus. Helps that they're right on the same spot. As we looked at some of the earlier information there, that's an area we see that continuing to, again, invest in in that pyramid of intervention there. So where we begin is may not where we end for some students. And so this will allow us to bring that even to the next level.
So you're looking at like a tier two, tier three support for that person to shift between the buildings?
More likely, that'll be pretty intensive tier three support. Tier two will be Tier two will be kind of a PAF or Wilson support at that level.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then I'll shift it back to Chris on just the proposed kind of salary and related benefits. So Chris.
So again, just everything that we've been talking about tonight, all the programs, all the support that's being provided, who's providing it? It's the teachers and the staff and that's what makes up the majority of the budget. So this slide is just showing you the projected salaries as of today. Again, we're still going to be adjusting this over the next month or two before the board adopts the budget in April as we continue to get retirements or new staff is added. Because for various reasons, if a new student comes in and requires additional support, we might have to add an additional teacher aid or something like that. So we'll be tweaking this again throughout the next month or two. But you can see the overall dollar amount just again, as of today, is projected just to go up about $1.8 million just for salaries. And then if I just lead that into the next part of it, again, is going over the largest benefits, which coincide with all the salaries that we have for staff. And this also is going up about $1.8 million.
If you can, I'm sorry, if you can go back to the 23, 24 projected salaries.
Yep.
It looks like, you know, while half of the salaries are for general education, it looks like we have about 19% of the budget in support of the special education programs, speaking to those tiers of support, right? That we're looking for to help increase the scores and the reading levels in the math. So I just want to call out the significant investment in those positions, right? That are in support of our kids who require the most amount of support and aid. I didn't want to brush over that so quickly.
Thank you for bringing that back up.
And just in comparison to like, like obviously that you would say that the salaries are the biggest investment really in our overall budget. Like that's half our budget really.
Yep.
Well, the salaries and the benefits, right?
And the benefit, correct. So you know, you're not talking about like curriculum, you're talking about investing in the people to teach the curriculum to our kids. And that's the important part.
And again, just going back over real quick with the largest benefits. I spoke last time in January. The major driving factor here this year in particular is the health insurance. For teachers specifically, they're in a different plan than the other staff. And that plan is just going up considerable. So that alone, that plan alone, I think it was about 1.2 or 1.3 million dollars just for that. And then the other health benefits plan that we have for all other staff, it's another couple hundred thousand dollars. But that again, it's not typical to go up these kind of percentages that we're seeing. The health insurance plan for the teachers went up about 16%, a little over 16% for the calendar year 2023. So that is atypical.
And that's not changes to it, that's just New York State funding it.
Yeah, that's nothing, again, it's beyond our control. But and everyone is feeling that, I mean, the teachers, the districts, everybody, even for retirees, that everyone feels that increase.
It's across the state and across the country. And this is not unique to us unfortunately.
And I think it's important to point out too, that because it's not on a calendar year as opposed to school year, it affects our budget this year too, the 16%.
Yes, because we did not budget for a over 16% increase for the calendar year 2023 last year.
Whereas historically, it was not.
Not anywhere close to that, yes. So and again, so now going forward, we're not really, not sure where this is going to go for 2024. So we are budgeting a little conservatively. I say that, but if it's another 16%, we're not budgeting that high. So we're hoping that it comes back down to more of a, you know, what it has been in the past.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
And then this last slide is just kind of recapping it all. Again, you mentioned salaries being about 50% of the budget and then you factor in benefits. And now we're, you know, up over 73% of the budget. And again, that's where the, you know, the overwhelming majority of the dollars are going to support the professionals that are teaching our kids. And then this last slide is just upcoming meeting dates. Again, March 21st is summary of what we've done up until this point. And then April 18th is the, another budget summary. And then that's where the board adopts the actual budget. May 2nd is the public budget hearing. And then the budget vote and trustee election is on May 16th.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Chris.
Well, I have a comment. Well, I think this presentation is much better than we had previously, at least from correlation of budget spending and excellence elements that you included in. This is a good thing, we should keep on doing that. But some of these, I mean, time wise, we probably couldn't get into detail. But in the future, we probably could get more correlation. For example, in the funding for the science program, we could correlate with the science research program. How many people is doing it? In the previous presentation, I didn't ask the question. The 59 people was this year. We should really track it from 2018 onward. Do we increase the number of people sort of in that program versus compared to the program you're funding or the budgets funding, whether we, you know, spending our money sort of worthwhile, okay? So that type of correlation is what exactly I was hoping to, I mean, was this two process that somehow can help each other, you know, and certainly help the board to understand how the money is spent. Another example area is in the mathematics, say everyday math versus this big idea math. How many people are using them? How many faculties using them? And what's the impact, you know, in your presentation is dollar and cents. In the excellence program is what is the results? What are the numbers that you benefit from it? That kind of correlation is what I think a responsible board really like to see how we, you know, spend our money, even though the control we have is very small.
No, I think you're right, Yvain. I don't want to go shopping for trouble here, but it was nice to see the two presentations. I know next year you don't want to do them together to make such a long meeting. But it was really nice to be able to see sort of the whole picture followed by this budget to see where all of those programs, like you said, fall into the budget at the end of the year. Because it's hard to hold the thread.
Yes.
When we're not in the room all the time, right? And we're not, you know, following it.
We can certainly bring out, we'll have the mid-year report and we can certainly bring a few highlights out. For example, if you have the science, we certainly have the historical percentage wise of children. There is one FTE that is supporting the children there right now. To be frankly, that program took a hit during COVID. So we're viewing this as basically our baseline of coming back. So what we can very easily do is demonstrate that next year and saying, here's what our numbers were this year. Here's what they're next year and just say, as we start kind of coming back online. And we do look at percentage wise because of the enrollment changes that we're seeing. We want to have it be representative of the percentage of our children. And again, as the science research is a program that starts with our kids in the sophomore year. So any of those programs, we can certainly do a little deeper dive in and walk that through without a problem. And perhaps without having a larger report there next year in mid-year. Oh, and show me this and that one, then we can pull up a couple without a problem.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Good.
Thanks, Yvain.
Are we on to the liaison reports?
Ah, yes.
So I didn't check with any of you trustees. I don't know if anyone has any liaison reports. Don't want to put you on the spot, but if you do, now is your time.
I have the Westchester Putnam School Board Association. Heidi and I attended the both sessions the past week or so. So with the legislatures and then one was just kind of like a debrief with the other school board members and the association. So look for a summary in your email. We're kind of working on that right now. But there was significant time spent actually last night, which was the last meeting we had, on the stop arm camera law. And there seems to be a little confusion with Westchester County as to how it's going to happen. And so, yeah, so I think everyone's looking for, kind of ramp up some advocacy on that. Because it seems like so simple that all the other counties were able to do it. And then CWAC, we also had a meeting recently. And we focused on our, on the tier two supports at each of the four buildings and discussed where the strengths are and areas for expansion improvement. I know one area of growth we talked about was potential for executive functioning at the younger grades. And they talked about there's areas for professional development, I believe in the spring on that department. So that was good to hear. And then another idea that came out was for growth and expanding on discussion of bullying with social media. Because how you, you know, when you were bullied in school, you kind of could leave it at school. But now it's, you take it with you wherever you go with your phone. So that was an area as well, so.
Thank you.
Those are my big updates.
We had our audit committee meeting. Yeah, the internal audit, which just is a totality. It was a very positive report again. And I guess to me, the most important thing is looking forward. What is it? The fixed asset inventory is going to be this year along with the facilities maintenance. And that just rotates through to make sure that over time, it's, there's a focus on each area and things aren't missed with extra focus or more frequent in the high risk areas.
Emphasis on high risk, and I believe one of them was mid-risk, but still something that was, you know, something we wanted just to keep an eye on.
Yes, yes. And high risk doesn't mean the district's behavior is just the nature of that area is because of how it's structured.
That type of an account, not because of our district.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
Well, I was absent at the policy committee because COVID, I had COVID. So maybe later on, Amanda, can you?
I'm not on the, that is one committee I am not on.
I noticed there were some, some policies is going to be approved today. So I don't know, Ray, you going to cover that?
Yes, when we hit the first readings and we do the second and Chad was there as well.
All right, so we are in receipt of the financial reports and we move to the minutes. Be it resolved that the Board of Ed, having received copies of the minutes, hereby approves the same motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, excellent. Personnel consent agenda, be it resolved that the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent, hereby approves the attached personnel agenda, motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
Just on that one, if it's all right. I just want to pull out two folks there.
Yeah, sure.
So Liz Turner is here this evening. She will, is our new first director of learner elementary position there. So as you know, Liz is our current assistant, or our current principal at SAS. Her assistant colleague, Linda Belcher, will be going up and filling her as an interim and will be posting for the principalship here shortly. So I just want to say thanks to Liz for being here and welcome aboard.
Congratulations and thank you. I'm sorry, I try to usually skim over that so that we don't have too many conversations.
Yeah, and then also I see Jennifer's here this evening and things like that. So Jennifer is here, she is our new social worker here. So she'll be joining us here shortly and she will be covering the intermediate and middle school program. Our previous social worker was able to find a position in the district, closure home and things. And so Jennifer's going to be joining us here shortly, so.
Welcome, thank you.
You're welcome.
Very appreciated.
Thank you.
Of course, of course. Okay, so we move to the CSE, CPSE, be it resolved that the Board of, sorry, we did, we voted and then Ray shared. Would you like us to re-vote Nancy? I apologize, I apologize. That was my fault. Be it resolved that the Board of Education, having received copies of the recommendations of the meetings listed on the attached memo, hereby approves the same motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversations? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Business consent agenda, be it resolved, the Board of Education, upon recommendation of the superintendent of schools, hereby approves the attached business consent agenda motion.
So moved.
Second.
Chris?
The one item maybe is the, we're doing a transfer to our capital reserve fund, which was established last May by the voters, up to $10 million. And we currently had about 4.4, 4.5 million dollars in there. We are going to be transferring 2.5 million dollars into that fund to bring that total up to 7 million. And that is what we will be asking the voters to vote on this May to access those funds for the athletic facility upgrades that we've been discussing over the last few months.
Excellent. Any questions? No?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, so we have the calendar for 23, 24. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of Somer Central School District hereby adopts the 23, 24 school calendar motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? The next is the agreement with the Westchester County use of voting machines. Be it further resolved that the Board of Education authorizes and directs its officers and employees to take all actions necessary to affect the purpose of and to cause compliance with the agreement, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Excellent. We move to the SEQRA type two action. And I'm going to move right to the end here where it says, be it resolved that the Board of Education of Somer Central School District hereby directs the district clerk to prepare a certified copy of this resolution, directs the assistant superintendent for business and operations, or the district's architect to forward the certified copy of this resolution to the New York State Education Department in connection with the school district's request for approval of the program from the New York State Educational Department, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any conversation, questions?
We have, the district has well water, correct?
Yep.
Is that where this just came from a test and it was required that we're going to need a court?
So this wasn't even any testing that has prompted this? This is just a requirement from the Department of Health to switch over to a chlorination system.
Is it a new requirement?
At the high school, yep. So we did budget for this in the current budget that the voters approved last, last May for this year.
Right now, all schools have drinking waters, eh?
Yes.
Yes. Sometimes some places do drinking water, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, the final board action is the capital facilities project intention to serve as the SEQRA, SECR.
SECR.
SECR. SECR lead agency, there you go. Moving right to the end again, that be it further resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the district clerk, the HDM architects and engineers to circulate a copy of this resolution and the attached notice of intention to serve as lead agency, excuse me, together with a full environmental assessment form, part one to all involved and interested agencies referenced therein, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Questions, conversations, concerns?
So if I may, just the previous resolution was the SECR type two action, that was for the chlorination system. This is just part of the process that we have to go through as this, the athletic facility upgrades have been designated as a type one action. So there's this 30-day process, 30-day notice that we have to give to act as lead agency. And then we anticipate at the March 21st board meeting, we'll be approving the SECR type one action resolution, just similar to the one that you just approved for the chlorination system.
Because of the amount of dirt we're moving?
Because of the amount of acreage, yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, so we move to the policies. We have several policies for first reading. So be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District hereby accepts the following policies for our first reading. We have student health services reading, attendance at meetings and conference expense reimbursement, authorization of school-owned materials and equipment, and use of cell phones. Dr. Blanche, if you want to elaborate for, or if one of the trustees would like to elaborate on the policies for first reading?
Well, the only question I had before.
Sorry, motion, first motion, I apologize, motion.
So moved, second.
Excellent, now we discuss.
It was about the reimbursement. I don't know what resolution was made.
So that was a 6831 that we had looked at before. And again, where historically it's been kind of amount per day that has gone for us. So if a teacher goes to a conference or things like that, reimburse them in the receipts. And what we're continuing to see is that it becomes a very labor-intensive process. So we're looking to follow as the governmental allotment for that time and just doing that at a governmental rate. Anything else there, Chris?
Nope.
So the per diem?
Yes.
The per diem amount, it depends on the.
What was the final number you guys decided on?
It depends on the location of where they're going. There's a federal website that's listed in the policy now.
So is not a flat?
Not a flat rate.
Increase now, okay, good.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other conversations about policies, anything you'd like us to pay attention to?
I think the other ones were pretty straightforward, yeah.
Right, okay, excellent. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? So now we have some policies for second reading and adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education of the Somer Central School District hereby accepts the following policies for a second reading and adoption. There's a policy on purchasing regulation and contagious diseases, motion.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
No, I mean, some of these were just adjusting to modern dollar amounts primarily.
This is the first reading or second?
This is the second and adoption.
And then the second piece there was just very, very updated policy. And then that one was actually last refreshed in '93. And so that's bringing in alignment with any updated pieces from the beginning there and getting that information from NISBA. with any updated pieces from the beginning there, getting that information from NISBA and working it through with council. Again, that one was just, needed to be updated.
So was this contagious disease defined in the policy?
And so that's where, if you look in here, it talked about the exposure plan that needed to be created there, and a specific plan. Actually, that was relatively, relatively new coming out of the last COVID piece that needed to be added to that. So that's where that basically came from, of having the ECP or exposure control plan, which is the district has now. And then, and that's part of working with, you've met Dan Carrato when he was, I think at the last meeting he was here, that's part of one of his charges, is to go through and help making sure that is addressed and review it on an annual basis. Again, we've been living that, it's just the policy needed to be updated to that.
Alignment to what's happening statewide.
Correct.
Excellent, thank you.
And the purchasing was the amounts increased as we discussed before?
Exactly.
Same amount?
Yep.
Okay.
Do you concur? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? All right, so it looks like we are at the second public forum. Just a reminder that all speakers will properly identify themselves. There is a piece of paper and a pen for you to please write your name at the podium. We limit to three minutes per speaker. We make sure that speakers comment on matters of public interest involving operations and programs, but speakers may not criticize or personally attack any individual connected with the school district. No district employees or student may be commented upon or identified by name or situation. Questions asked by the public will be referred to the appropriate staff member for reply at a later time or date. Questions requiring investigations will be referred to the superintendent for consideration and later response, and as we saw earlier, written statements shall be given to the district clerk for inclusion in the record of the meeting. Public comment? Excellent, thank you.
My name is Erin Kovacs, and I'm here. I want to bring attention to the board as well as to community members, some topics that are being brought up that are making children very uncomfortable in school. My child is opted out of sex education/LGBTQI topics. It was written in emails and was sent out, and my child was in a class after the email was sent out and went to a bathroom and was texting me. I'm sharing this because it's very important for you to hear the child. Child, they are doing that video in ELA. I'm in the bathroom right now. Mom, is it the one on the LGBTQI? Call me now. And do not worry, you won't get in trouble for calling me. Child, okay, calls me, tells me the video. I tell her to go to the office. She says, no, I will get in trouble. I said, go to the nurse. What time does your class end? It ends at 12 o'clock. Mom, is it LGBTQI? Child, yes, I said that like four times. Mom, go to the office. No, I'm going back to class. I'll get in big trouble. Caps, mom, do not go to class. I called the office. Go to the office. Where are you? Child, I'm in class. Leave the class right now and go to the office. Dominic is picking you up there. Dominic is her stepfather. Then they will call me down. I can't leave. Caps, walk out now. Get up and walk out now. You will not get in trouble. Go now. Child, I can't, I'm scared. I said walk out, child. I just got called down to security vestibule. Mom, oh no. Ms. Manjoni stopped me. She's sending me to counseling.
We're not allowed to use names.
Oh, principal stopped me. I'm not allowed to go. Dom is there, go now. Okay, I'm going. I can't go. I'm going to stop there and explain very quickly. The child was then told that your mother's boyfriend is not allowed to pick you up. Meanwhile, he drops her off, picks her up, and attends every meeting regarding my child's IEP. Second of all, this is the second time we were denied access to our child in your school. I had to leave work once before for the same exact thing. My child texting me from a bathroom, very upset. I left work that day. I left work today, but Dominic works right down the road. He never got access. Two people greeted him at the door and told him there was not a video with anything sexual on it and provided us with the video. The name of the video is LGBTQI Preventing Homophobia. That's just the name. And yes, there is sexual discussion in the video. We watched it. I am bringing this to your attention so that you realize the legalities of denying access of a child to their parent. I was then followed up with an email stating that we are not allowed to access our child at any point during the day, and we're only allowed to send a message through the office. This is not the first time I've been told this. I contacted legal advice. This is illegal, especially when her father signed her out in the security vestibule and they said, nobody is signing you out. Your mother cannot tell you to go there. I wasn't even there. The security office called her down, not me. With that said, my second thing, COVID relief fund. I heard you talking about, I'm sorry I was late, about the funding for special ed and whatnot. As we sit here, she is losing accommodations on her IEP coming this Thursday. We are begging for accommodations for this child. She is drowning. She came here and she lost 10 periods of reading from Yorktown in seventh grade. We are now trying to build it back. She regressed two years in reading. My point to you, why? Why do I have to beg? Why does my face have to turn purple five times a month? Why do I have to run out of my job in a frenzy because my child is texting me from a bathroom, petrified? Which, by the way, she was stopped in the hallway and then followed up with a, put your phone away. I have that in text. Do not call your mother to add any more stress to this situation. If you're uncomfortable, you come to the office to talk to us. Not okay. Not okay on any level. And what was done to my child today, I'm scared to send her to school tomorrow. And she is scared because her biggest question to me tonight was, you promised me that you were going to tell the teacher that I didn't have to stay if they showed that video on the LGBTQI. How come they didn't let me leave? That's the child, and it's all on text. And it's all emailed to every staff member last night and six months ago. There's reasons she's opted out that I don't have to share with you. Under state law, LGBTQI is part of sex education, and you are legally allowed as an adult to opt an eighth grader out of sexual education. We were told today she does not have to attend health when they talk about sex education, but that she does have to attend LGBTQI because it wasn't addressed in sex education. It is addressed in sex education because they're talking about sexual preferences right in the video. I don't even know what to say. I have no words, except I don't know if I'm going to send her to school tomorrow because I'm actually scared that I don't have access to my daughter. We had a family emergency, and I called the office one day. They said, we cannot pull her out of class. I said, I have an emergency, I need to speak to her. Give us the message, we'll send it to her. I said, it's personal. Can you call her down in between classes? They said, no. I said, I'm begging you. She's texting me from a bathroom. They said, then she's going to lose her phone. I said, fine, call her down. The front office. They called her down. They said, if we call her down, she's not getting a late pass to go back to class. I then left my job and drove to the school, signed her out for 10 minutes from the security vestibule, talked to her outside about the uncomfortability. She gave me the lesson that was being done on LGBTQI, and then I put her back into school. And I got reprimanded for that today, and I got warned, that I was already warned, that I'm not allowed to come to school during the day to talk to my child.
If you could please just, if you could finish up, you're well above the three minutes we --
When my child is texting me from a ba -- When my child is texting me from a bathroom, clearly upset, and school won't answer me on the phone when I politely called and said, can you please get her out of the class? She's afraid she's going to get in trouble. And they told me, no. And my husband had to leave his job down the road, and he came here to get her, and then he was going to bring her right back in 10 minutes to go to art, and they denied him access, saying he's my boyfriend in front of people, telling her, your mother's boyfriend has no access to you during the day. He's not on the list. I gave them verbal access. They knew on the phone Dominic was on their way. This isn't okay. This is going to go further, but I need you to be aware of it. I'm asking for input this time because I've spoken before.
Thank you for sharing with the board. We'll make sure that your concerns go to the appropriate personnel and that they are addressed. Thank you so much. You left your name and your information? Thank you.
... endangering the welfare of child.
Thank you. All right, it looks like we have made it to the board comments.
I, I --
Oh, I'm so sorry. Please, please, of course, no, no.
So I was sitting at home watching this online, and, which is why I just threw a hat on and ran over, and my husband is working, so I had to bring my son, which I don't like to do. But I noticed on, my name is Addis. My son is in the middle school. I noticed that in the budget, you guys had restorative practice. So I'm part of the CIT for restorative practice, and my question is, have we decided then to become a restorative practice district? Because as far as I know --
Can you speak to the microphone, please?
As far as I know, we have decided that it would be kind of like a decision in the CIT whether or not the district would become a restorative practice district? And seeing it on the budget, I was just surprised that the decision was, I guess, already made. I do have a lot of concerns with restorative practice, or maybe it's just training for the teachers. My concern is special education and restorative practice and how it fits in. And I've been in communication with, I know I'm not allowed to say names, but a member of CIT who leads it, and we're supposed to start, you know, speaking about it. I know she has a book, and we're going to have a book club about it.
So we're not going to mention folks by name, but if you'd like to mention folks by name, you're welcome to send an email to the board where it's not in public session.
My question isn't about the person. My question is, I see it on the budget, so have we made the decision as a district to become a restorative practice? I know it's already practiced, and there's only one person in the entire district that is formally trained at it, from what I understand. So I'm just curious, like, have we made the decision to become a restorative practice district? Because it's on the budget.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. So again, this is a public comment session, so you make comments, and we take the comments. We'll make sure that those comments go to the appropriate personnel and that they respond to you, but this is not a Q and A for the board to respond to. Thank you for your comment.
I'm going to write my email down.
Excellent, thank you.
In the hopes that I get an answer.
Any other comments from the community? I believe we've made it to the board comments.
Two things I want to say. One was an observation from tonight in the forwarded excellence. I know we have a lot of data in the district, and it's always, I appreciate that the district is clearly always paying attention to it. And when things are identified as a need, it's being acted on quickly. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
The other thing I wanted to just comment on, I was at the IB diploma presentation for perspective for sophomores considering it for next year. And I just want to say, it was super exciting. Something I wish I could have done. Really, really an outstanding program. Seeing the kids that are currently in diploma program, some that have graduated already in college, shared their experiences and what it's been like and how it's helped them so tremendously in that transition to college. It's made it so much easier for them compared to a lot of their peers, and the skills that they talk about are just fantastic things, fantastic skills for people when they get out in the world. And I just think it's a terrific program.
Thank you, Chad.
That's it.
Yeah, I just want to talk about the data in the forwarded excellence. You know, I thought it was great to hear when Claire was talking about, you know, how they've been analyzing the data and using it and kind of the shifts that they're making mid-year. I think that's always a positive conversation, you know, as a board member, I think for the community too, to see that there's that oversight and level of inspection that's going on, and then, you know, corrective action plan that the school's doing. So that was good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm going to just piggyback on both of those comments, too. I agree. I appreciate the, you know, we've talked about it quite a bit, I know, like offline and online, of kind of changing how the information gets pushed out to the public, and I really do like the changes that have been made in the forwarded excellence report and how it's coming together and how you can relate the data to, you know, what we're investing our money in. And I'm just going to give a shout out to the March, to, in March 9th, 10th, and 11th, the Lion King Junior will be at middle school, since I know the high school gets taken care of with Sarah. So, but, yeah, you can get your tickets at the end of the month, and the kids have been working really hard on it, so.
Thank you.
It's going to repeat a lot. Well, today we have two presentations. One's on excellence elements, one is on budget. In the past, these two presentations tend to be separate. We, you know, not necessarily put on the same day, even on the same, they are not correlated. I mentioned that correlation before, I think this is important. We begin to now make the academic school programs and the finance or physical program sort of gel together so we understand how we running our school. The budget, you know, we bought a $100 million budget that is largely fixed, fixed in the sense the board members here couldn't do much about it because either due to contract, due to law, due to inflation, pension, and things like that are pretty much fixed. We can't do much about it. The ones we have some control is discretionary portion is small. But the small part is very important because that's the portion that really directly relates to students, particularly performers. So I think the linking these two presentations, even though in two different domain, together is very, very important. I am really glad to see that it's happening, and happening to the sense that people can ask intelligent questions to ask how money is spent. Not only the money expenditure part, but the important part is, I think people, through these presentations and correlation, would begin to understand how the school is functioning. The community will understand much better about how the school is run. So I'm glad we're moving in that direction, and welcome more community, you know, folks to come forward if there's questions that you need to ask, you know, answer. Just come tell us. Thank you.
As I'm listening to everyone talking, thinking about a book that I read a million years ago, you all probably read it also, one of the best, I think, most approachable business books, From Good to Great. And they talk about how companies go from good to great, and I know that it was a big book in education and a bunch of superintendents wrote it, read it. book in education and a bunch of superintendents wrote it, read it, I'm sure you read it also, Ray. And I think-
He lived in Colorado.
Sorry? Yeah, oh, also probably, yeah, okay. So, so, but what I'm thinking of is everyone's talking about, you know, following data, and we've been sort of on the case of the district for several years now, the board has been asking for lots of data. And one of the, one of the key points that I think is really powerful from that book that I take with me always is to confront the brutal facts. And something that I'm really proud of this district for doing is confronting the brutal facts. When there was a need in ELA, when there was a need for more support, we were, we saw a need for the science of reading, we didn't ignore them, we're following them. And it took a little bit, you know, and everybody wanted to sort of figure out where we needed to go with it, but we didn't ignore that data. We followed it and we're looking to find a way to support our kids through it. And so I'm really proud of our district, I'm proud of our board for pushing and asking hard questions even though it's difficult, and I'm really proud of our district for following the needs of our kids and following it through our budget and through the support that we give to our educators. So thank you, I'm really grateful. And we can have a book club next week if you'd like. I'm kidding. Thank you.
Thanks.
It was really great to see all of this together, right? The budget with the, with the programs and what we're spending our money on and why we need it.
Sure.
It was great. Thank you.
Absolutely. So, just a couple things, happy Valentine's Day to everybody. So, so-
Oh, yes. Very romantic evening.
Just a couple things, just one piece, so the question came forth is for, is the district going to a district, kind of restorative practices as a district? No. One of the realities is that, I think our speaker came forth and spoke before about what is the thinking about with restorative practices? The idea about when a challenging behavior perhaps happens. And so it'll happen period to period, class to class, may come to billing administration, may come to my office. And so one of the things we're looking to do is to talk about students being involved in the conversation. So for myself, I've had some exposure to that, certainly not at the depth and level of some of our colleagues, nor of any of our teachers, but thinking about just this conversation, you know, what happened? So as you're talking to that student, what they're owning the pieces there, what was happening, what were you thinking about at the time? Maybe what have you been thinking since that happened? Who have you impacted on these decisions? So students can kind of be starting to understand that there was an impact that took place and to walking through this. So now that we've had that conversation, we've realized that, so what are thoughts we can do to kind of maybe mend those fences and build, build relationships there, especially in a district of our size and our relationships, we're, we're a pretty tight family. And so we're going to be with each other and build children for multiple years. So I would say that that's really the level, and that is nothing that started this year, last year, it's been many years in the making where just talking about how is the best way to, when students make a misstep or there's a challenge behavior, it's not punitive, okay, you're done for today, or you're done for a period, or just, okay, timeout, you're coming back. It's having a conversation. It frankly takes more time in the, in the beginning, but upfront, you're building that relationship there. So again, that will be a piece that the, our C committee and the subcommittee there specifically will be looking at, should we invest that really at a deeper, longer, more intense level? That's a conversation that the, our speaker spoke earlier that they're having now, and we'll, we'll kind of see where they go later. That's a determination, I don't know if it is something that they're, that, that's a kind of a pretty heavy lift. That's a multiple year plan that would be developed in there. But from a very high level rudimentary piece, our use of restorative practices, and maybe from adult to adult as well too. And so there's something that's going on, say, hey, you know, what was, what was going through your mind at that moment in time? Can you talk about it? And then the person who may be on the receiving side may come back together and kind of have a conversation together where you're facilitating that work. And so hopefully, at the end, that they can, they can understand where each person was coming from and what the impact was on each individual, and then step forward to work together. So that's a, that's a kind of a good practices in how to treat each other, human beings. A truly restorative practice district is significantly more than that. So my comment in there, I can certainly have added some more detail, was more about the very initial kind of pieces, not a, a multi-year plan or anything like that, so. And then just again, we don't have, obviously, school next week, but really quickly we come back, we've got wonderful March activities with the play here, as well as we've got the high school. And we are again closing out our winter season athletic sports, and we'll be starting up with our spring work as well there as well too. So one of the things that we are certainly seeing in our schools is that, I don't know about you, but I am missing the snow. And so what the next two weeks, don't know if it's going to, it's going to happen, so we'll see, but it's been a very unique year in that regards and stuff, so but-
You can't ask for ski slopes.
Yeah, that's coming next, we'll get one of those fake ski slopes.
I had crocs as a-
Right, right. So thank you.
No ski slope.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Ray.